I call this meeting of the Conner Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present, that the meeting has been duly called, and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. It is 6:00 PM. If you will stand with me, please. Mr. Hubert to lead us in the invocation and Mr. Sanders in the pledges.
Hail to your heavenly Father. We are grateful for this day that we have. We are grateful for the beautiful weather that we received. We're grateful for the opportunity that we as board members have to serve and the community has to come and participate and listen to for the meeting. We ask that thy Spirit be upon us and help guide us through this meeting today in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me as we honor our state and our country.
(Inaudible) United States of America and a good republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honors the Texas flag, and the Texas presidency, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hubert and Mr. Sanders. A personal point here, and the rest of the board was not aware of this, including before the prayer, but would ask that you keep Mr. Williams, Dayton Williams' family in your thoughts and prayers at the loss of his wife Maya's father. So we'd ask that y'all would remember them as appropriate. Item number two, A, Dr. Stockton, Special District Recognition, 2015, UIL Class 6A, Girls 100 Yard Backstroke State Champion.
Well, we're excited to have this item on the board and have our recipient here. I'll ask Dr. Povich, Principal of the Ninth Grade Campus of the Woodlands, to come up and introduce.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Stockton. It's an honor to be here before you, representing the Woodlands High School and the Woodlands High School Ninth Grade Campus. I have the honor of introducing our five-time state champion swim coach, Coach Kent Kirchner, and he's going to talk about a very dedicated and talented student athlete.
First off, I'd like to thank the Lord for bringing our family here 16 years ago, and two grandsons, too, and very happy about that. And I want to thank the board for all your tireless work that you do and Dr. Stockton. I want to talk a little bit about Lucy here, something at the state meet that happened. Usually the kids come up to me and ask me for advice before they swim, so on and so forth, and Lucy came up to me and I was at a total loss as what to say to her. And I said, "You know what, Lucy? If you win this event, you're going to meet Dr. Stockton and the school board in person." Okay? And she won the Hunter backstroke. That's not entirely what happened, okay? But what really happened was Lucy came up to me and she said, "You know what? I'm going to win this thing because I hate losing." And I knew she was going to win right after that. Lucy's mom is with her right here today, and it's Dr. Nordman, and Lucy is just one of the finest athletes that I've ever had the opportunity to coach. And she's very athletic, very good in underwaters, on her backstroke, and just destroyed people. So we're really happy to have her, and I hope this is going to be an annual event for her. So I really appreciate everything that you've done. Lucy, do you want to come on up? Okay. Okay. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Lucy, thank you. You have just shown what an amazing athlete at your level I can't even imagine. I do sprint triathlons and oh my word, I'm amazed. So we wanted to present you with this, and I know that she would like to get a couple of pictures, so why don't we step out from the podium?
Dr. Nordman, we know you're very proud and we appreciate you sharing her with CISD, okay?
See you next year. Thank you.
Item 2B, citizens' participation. Secretary, do we have anybody signed up? Very good. How about that? Okay. Item three is the consent agenda, and I have been requested to pull two items. Mr. Hubert wants to discuss item F, and Dr. Stockton has asked that we pull and discuss item N, as in Nancy. So I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda minus F and N.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
And the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Raise your hand or something, whatever. Okay. Now if we will go back and deal with item F, 3F, excuse me, Approval and Application of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Grant 2015.
I'll ask Dr. Heinz to come to the podium and answer any questions that we have on this.
Okay, I just had a couple of questions. I like that we're doing this, obviously. But my question is, the grant is for 392, is that a one-time, one-year grant? Is that...
If we rewarded the grant, it would be a one-time, one-year grant award, and there's no matching funds required.
Right. So do we have an idea as to how we would, how would we spend this money? Would we spend this money in one year? I mean, I'm just curious.
It basically is three components. It's staff development is a big part of the cost, so for summer training and summer days. Another big part of the cost are materials for the safe and civil schools, materials. And then the third part was if we added some social workers and it would be their salary through that year.
I saw that down here, the addition of four social workers. So that was my biggest question was, you know, we had, if we use this money and we do add the four social workers, and I understand this is just an application, which I'm certainly in favor of doing, but is this something that we would need to include in a budget moving forward? Is this just a, would we apply for this grant on an annual basis? How would we do that?
Actually, this is a, we've started working on safe and civil schools last year as part of an ongoing effort. We want to get better at student behaviors and working with student behaviors. So we've started this kind of way of accelerating and kickstarting that and doing that a little faster with more schools, because there's a cost associated with the training and the materials and so on. And so we looked at that grant as a way to do it, and really the object of the grant is to work with students to identify positive behavior support early to avoid them from escalating into worse behaviors. And so that's really kind of the goal. And we would, actually, our plan would be to do it for a year, but we think this would get us kickstarted, and obviously we'd look at applying again and see how it goes. When we participate in grants, we always go through an ongoing evaluation process because sometimes it works out well, and sometimes we think, no, we don't need to continue this. So there would be an evaluation piece as well.
Okay. Very good. Those are the questions I had. I love it. I like the idea. I know it's something that we desperately need to continue to move forward with and work with. I just want to know a little bit more about it. So thank you.
Do we have that in a motion?
Yes, sir.
A second motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign, and the motion passes. And item 3N, ratification of agreed order with Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. Dr. Stockton?
We'd like to spend some time giving a little more explanation on this item. I'll ask Mrs. Gladys to present it.
Sure, Dr. Stockton. In January this year, the district received a letter from the TCEQ, and it was something called a Notice of Enforcement Action Letter, and it pertained to events that occurred in 2009, the district failing to post a notice of an unacceptable test sample report and that notifying the district that it didn't comply with the previous request that it conduct biannual testing, or twice-a-year testing starting in 2009. And it referred to a letter, well, and in that, they said that they had, we learned during the process, that they had sent us a letter in July 2009 after the district submitted results, that one of its 20 samples submitted at that time showed an unusual amount of lead and copper, not within the parameters the state requires. And so the TCEQ said they sent us a letter into July 2009 in response to that. We don't have a record of receiving the letter. It doesn't mean that we didn't, but we have been unable to locate it and we're unaware of it, and consequently, as a result of that, we did not do testing twice a year beginning in 2009 going forward. So, but we did, but we had tested. The state requires testing on a three-year cycle, and we did conduct that test. And in addition to the routine testing we did, we tested, the TCEQ themselves tested in 2010, and then in 2014, TCEQ requested that we do two tests twice during that year of the same well, and we did those tests as well. And all of the tests that have done since that one sample of 20 have been within the acceptable ranges under state law. So the water well has been fine since 2009, but it is true that we did not do the testing that they required us to do in 2000, beginning in 2009. So when they send you a letter like this, they say that if you, because you failed to do what they asked you to do, they're going to take certain steps against you. And, but they, because we, our staff visited with them and explained their situation, and we talked about the tests had all been within range, the TCEQ offered to do an agreed order, which is a typical response from them, that if you agree to pay a reduced fine, you don't have to admit that you've, you know, engaged in any misconduct, we just, it resolves the matter going forward. And so because we believed what the original enforcement action was going to require was the district to continue testing twice yearly, which is very expensive and submitting those test results to TCEQ, and it had a higher administrative penalty, they reduced the administrative penalty and eliminated all the testing requirements, and it would close the matter. The one catch is that it had to be done by March 5th, and we didn't have a board meeting prior to that time. So the district determined it was in our best interest because the well has been clean, because we would not have to incur the additional testing costs, and we feel confident that our water is very acceptable and good, and so we determined that we would go ahead and agree to the order and ask you to ratify it. And so that's what I'm asking you to ratify this evening, is that agreed order that we submitted on March 5th.
Thank you, Ms. Gladys. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second. And a second. Any further discussion?
I have just a couple of questions.
Please.
So, Mrs. Gladys, as I understand, the TCEQ eliminated the need for the additional testing in our agreed order, so it sounds to me like there's not really any issues with our water.
Correct. That would be my assumption.
That's the assumption or presumption that's, because they, if there were, they would certainly have required additional testing.
I agree.
And as I understand, in the 2009, there were 20 samples taken, and we had one sample that had two elements that were outside of whatever, but the other 19 were okay.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify.
And I think those facts all contributed to the point we're at today as well, that it was a very minor problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor about ratifying, or for, I'm sorry, item number N, please raise your right hand. All opposed, like sign. And that passes. Thank you very much. Item 4A, instructional material adoption for high school math, social studies, floral design, and fine arts. Dr. Stockton?
I'll invite Dr. Knoll to the podium to present this item.
Good evening, President Husbands, Dr. Stockton, members of the board. The 2014-2015 CIST textbook committee has completed its review of the textbooks designated by the Texas Education Agency in Proclamation 2015 for Adoption and Use in School Districts. Proclamation 2015 provides for the adoption of social studies, mathematics, fine arts, and CTE textbooks in grades K through 12. The CIST textbook committee members and subcommittee members have evaluated these textbooks and participated in the year-long review of the materials. The textbooks have been on display at the textbook warehouse for public view from November 1st through January 15th. Teachers and patrons have submitted evaluations and comments to the committee for consideration in the recommendation. The textbook committee met on January 20th, January 26th, and February 3rd, and voted to recommend the following list of books to the Board of Trustees for ordering. Before we seek your approval of that list, we'd first like to thank those who have worked so hard to make this list finalized. First, we'd like to extend a heartfelt thanks to all of our wonderful teachers who have shared their expertise throughout this process. A complete list of those teachers is included in your board book. And representing our curriculum and instruction department here tonight, I would just ask that they stand when I say your names, just so we can recognize you for your hard work. Holly Berger, Don Venus, Chris Reichelt, Darren Carlisle, Pat Paris, and Edith Upshaw. Thank you all so much for your great efforts. At this time, we seek your approval of the list as submitted.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second motion? Thank you. Question and second. Any further discussion? Questions? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. The motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item 5A, Administration, Selection of DBR Engineers for Phase 2 of the LED Lighting Project District-wide. Dr. Stockton?
Mr. Foster, please present these items.
President Husbands, members of the board, Dr. Stockton's, my pleasure tonight to request your approval to select DBR engineers for Phase 2 of the LED lighting project. If you recall, we recently completed what was now Phase 1, where we replaced a lot of T12, which is the oldest fluorescent technology fixtures, with LED fixtures. When we reported the completion of that project not too long ago, we promised to look further into it, see if we could maximize the benefit of that new technology moving forward. At this time, we're asking you to approve assigning DBR engineers to a project so that we can do that investigation and bring forward at a later date a project for your approval to continue that endeavor to increase our efficiency and hopefully bring down our energy costs in the district. DBR engineers are recommended for this selection for this project because the district believes that they're highly qualified and they successfully completed this job for us in what is now Phase 1. And they've demonstrated competency in this effort, and their qualifications have been provided to the district, and they can provide this at a fair and reasonable price. The approval we're asking for tonight is the assignment of them to the project and the delegation of Dr. Stockton to negotiate and approve a contract for them to design this project. This time, I ask for your approval.
A motion?
Motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
I have one question, sorry. Mr. Foster? So this is an engagement just to determine the scope of the project?
This is indeed...
Is the scope of the project outlined?
No, the purpose of assigning this to, for this project is to help us determine the scope.
So we're engaging them to determine the scope of the project?
That is correct.
Okay. And then at that time, that will come back to the board?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure of.
At the time we're successful developing a project with a set budget and a set scope, we'll bring that back to the board.
So my next question is, how long do you think that'll be?
Well, there's lots of moving parts in there. So we're going to spend a great deal of time going through each of our buildings with a fine-tooth comb, determining where the oldest fixtures are, working with the, with our utility provider to maximize the rebates that are available to us now. The rebates we were after on what is now Phase 1, those rebates have expired, so now we're moving to another phase of another rebate season. So the things that we can replace and get that return on are changing slightly. So the technology, as it gets older, and the older technologies get even older, those rebates are changing as well. So I've been instructed by our CFO to work methodically and slowly so that when we bring something back to you, that we can bring back something with a substantial return on our investment. So to give you a timeframe, I'd be guessing, but I would hope to have something, a lot of the investigation is done between now and the summer, so that we can spend some of the summertime break really diving in and designing what we need to do.
I think that's a great plan. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. The motion passes. Item 5B, Select IBI Architect, Group Architects for District CTE Upgrade Design Services.
At this time, I'm asking for your approval in the selection of IBI Group Architects to design a project that we've called District CT Upgrade, and we're engaging them to help us develop the scope as well. The project is not defined at this point, but we need their services and their expertise to survey our campuses, work with our CTE department in developing and vetting out the need for individual programs, and then finding places for them to fit within the district. So as we develop that project, we would actually, we would develop a budget and bring something back for you to approve before we proceed with any work. So this selection is merely assigning or engaging a design firm to help us in that effort. We've selected IBI Group Architects based on their recommendations or based on their qualifications and exemplified services for other CTE programs in other areas of our Gulf Coast region. So we feel like IBI Group Architects is, demonstrates a high qualifications and a competency in this particular area, as well as the ability for us to negotiate a fair and reasonable price for these services. Again, this is an approval to assign them to this process and delegate Dr. Stockton to negotiate and approve their contract for these services. At this time, I request your approval.
Mr. President, I move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Any questions?
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Foster. And item 5C, Amendment of GMP for Oak Ridge Ninth Grade Campus additions covered walkway.
Yes, sir. At this time, I request your approval for an amendment to the GMP for GURTEC, the contractor that's currently engaged on the renovations at the Oak Ridge Ninth Grade Campus. This amendment will be used to construct a covered walkway that will connect the senior high campus, Oak Ridge High School, to the Ninth Grade Campus to provide cover so that the students in the transfer between those two buildings can have some protection from bad weather. The price for this has been established at $489,955. And with this amendment, the total contract cost for the Oak Ridge Ninth Grade contract is $14,364,459. The funding for this portion, I've been told, is coming from the general fund. I reported earlier it's coming up from the bond funds, but general funds are set aside to pay for this project. At this time, we request your approval.
I have a motion. So made.
Second. Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. First of all, when you go from the Ninth Grade Campus, you cross our new road that we just built. Yes, sir. Will it cover over the road?
It will not cover the road. The road is a county right-of-way, so we will stop at either side of it.
That's the first question. The second question is, we have this similar issue at other campuses, and are we going to address that inequity? And that may be more of a Dr. Stockton question, but I want to notice that there's other kids getting wet going between band halls and classrooms and so on and so forth, and I think fair is fair. And it may be just in the line.
In many cases, we've done it. In addition to Conner High School, we've done the same, they're shorter, but we've done the same type of cover. Armstrong Elementary, we were there on a field trip last month, and there are several other examples of when we have the opportunity, we try to cover the kids.
Any other questions?
I'm looking at this. Am I correct? How wide is this going to be?
The canopy is partially 12 feet wide.
12 feet wide? Okay. Then I'm good.
Maybe not all the lone rain, but some of it.
But I'm just, you know, I mean, side rain coming in. I wanted to understand. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. And item passed. Capital Improvement Update, item 5D.
And now I'd like to give you an update for the capital improvement projects we have underway. We're going to start with the Oak Ridge High School Ninth Grade Campus. Apparently, this project is on schedule. We are turning it over to phases. What you're looking at now is a completed front entry structure. So we turned over the use of the new admin section to the school this past week. So you can see the interior finishes are in and the offices are set up. Now we get back to the classroom sections. The classrooms are on schedule, but they are coming in. We're nearing a point for the classrooms where the building is what we call a dry condition, so where the windows and the roof and things are in. The finish brick will go on the outside, but what we're seeking now is the effort to get to the point where the inside remains dry so we can work on finishing the interior while the exterior is in progress. At Oak Ridge Elementary, again, this project is on schedule. What you're looking at here is the expanded parking lot in the front of that school. This is an area also we're going to occupy for staging during the course of the construction to try to minimize the impact with the clinic and other stuff attached to that building. We've got the slabs in for the mechanical room additions where we're actually creating more space for the more efficient equipment that we're installing in this campus. Like I said, that project is on schedule and on track. One more update for you is the, not long ago, we approved a project to move into Phase 2 of our front door security project. That project is starting this week. Some of the wiring infrastructure is started yesterday, as a matter of fact. So we're working through those campuses now, doing wiring, things of that nature. The equipment is still arriving, so as that equipment comes in, they will go back with a primary crew and start installing the equipment. The plan for that project is to have it active over the summer, so that when we start school for next year, everything is commissioned and working properly.
How many campuses is that affecting?
On the second, I mean, I know we've done like, what, 30 of, or 35?
We touched 31 campuses in Phase 1. We're touching 20 new campuses that get new equipment. We are going back to the original 31 to fix some of the bugs and add some additional features, a new phone at the principal desk to see if they can operate when they're there by themselves or with limited staff from their office. So we're actually touching all 51 campuses that we touched, but 20 are getting new front door buzzing.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Foster?
Are you glad to see the sun out here lately?
I am. I know our football coaches and other athletic staff are sad to see the sun, because that means there are going to be watering fields, but we're happy to get some work done.
Thank you very much, Mr. Foster, as always. Good job. Item 6A, Results of CIST Bond Refunding Series 2015. Dr. Stockton?
Very excited to introduce Mr. Cox to introduce our guest.
President Husbands, members of the board, Dr. Stockton, as you know, we recently completed a bond refunding, and I'm happy to introduce John Robuck, our financial advisor, here tonight to make a presentation about the results of the refunding.
Thank you, Mr. Cox, President Husbands, members of the board, Dr. Stockton. I always appreciate coming out and sharing good news of the results of the bond sale.
Use it while you got it.
Well, before I get to the results, I always like to go over the bond buyer index. This is the snapshot of the bond market as it is today on a weekly average. I marked on this chart where we sold the bonds, the rate was at 3.6 at the time we sold these bonds. And to kind of put that in perspective, at 11-year average, we were 78 basis points below that, and we're 33 basis points off of all-time lows. With the district's high rating of AA2, AA, and the permanent school fund guarantee, we had some major success in the market selling these refunding bonds. Again, like we presented before for the primary order, we're looking at refunding $118,995,000 of bonds from the district's 2008-2009A bonds. As you're listed there, the average rate on those bonds combined was a 5.267%. And I'll get to put that in perspective in a second. Sources uses of funds, we were able to issue 117,665,000 of bonds to refund the 118,000, excuse me, 118,995,000 of bonds. Again, we had those bonds refunded out at a rate of 5.267. We're able to bring those rates down to 3.408. We also received some premium. Issuers or purchasers paid more for the bonds than the face value, so we're able to reduce the amount of bonds issued. And then highlighted there in green is the number y'all all are going to see, it's the $18,667,588 in savings. And then on the final page, this is how it shakes out. Far left is the district's current debt service requirements, less the Far left is the district's current debt service requirements, less the bonds to be refunded, plus the bonds we sold in February, with the resulting debt service and the savings there on the right column in yellow. It averages about $933,000 in savings a year for 20 years.
And let me just clarify, I think we all understand this, but just for the record.
Yes, sir.
We did not extend durations, maturities.
Yes, sir.
We only cut interest rate.
Yes, sir. And you can see that the middle three columns there, they're all level?
Yes, sir.
They don't extend. Yes, sir, that's correct.
Yes, very much.
Beautiful.
Average life is about 15 years?
It's average life is 15.311 years.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I wonder you have a smile on your-
It's easy selling y'all's bonds.
You are welcome back anytime.
Y'all do a good job, and that's part of why it's so easy. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Anybody have any other questions?
No.
Comments?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Anytime. Thank you.
Item six B, financial statements.
Mr. Rice?
Good evening, President Husbands, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton. I'm here this evening to present the financial statements for the district for the month of February. These statements will include the general fund, debt service, child nutrition, and self-funded insurance. First statement we're going to look at this evening is our balance sheet. Balance sheet includes assets, liabilities, and fund balances. In the assets column, we always like to look at our cash and investments, get the detail of where our cash is and how our investments are working for, so you can see where those are located. And also this time of year, we like to look at our collections from the tax office. As you can see, we're right about 97% where we've been, so we're trending well, so we feel very good about that. The next statement we're looking at is our income statement. It includes the revenues, expenditures, and fund balances. In the revenues, you have local and intermediate sources, state program and federal. And the largest of the revenues are the local intermediates. We'll look at those, look at the detail. In the general fund and debt service, the largest revenue source is our property taxes. In food service, it comes from food sales. In self-funded insurance, it is from our premium contributions. We can also look at our expenditures at the functional level. If you look in the debt service column, you'll see under the debt service, the $59.7 million there, we made our February 15th debt service payment, which next year will be $900,000 for less than our savings. Self-funded insurance, for the year, we've had total revenues of $17,575,000. We've had expenses of $18,45,000, leaving us with revenues under expenditures currently at $470,000. Participation in our wellness centers, we've had 4,007 patients visit our centers, averaging about 668 a month. And you can see the breakdown from the Oak Ridge Center and the Conroe Center. We made them pretty steady. Our $109 million bond transition plan, we've currently expended and encumbered $71.5 million. We estimate to complete on the projects of $34.4 million, leaving us with a projected forecast of these projects of $105.4 million, leaving us with some contingency at the end of about $3.1 million. Our investments for the month, we ended January at $419 million. End of February, $395 million. As you know, we had $70 million worth of debt payment, so that decreased a little bit. The wham of our short-term investments were, which were pulls in Capital One is one day, and that's yielding us a little over 16 basis points. The wham of our longer-term investments is 689 days, and that's yielding us about 73 basis points. The combined portfolio wham is 82 days, and our combined portfolio is yielding about 23 basis points. And our benchmark, which is statewide, which is the 90-day T-bill, is at two basis points, so we're outperforming our benchmark. And that is all.
Mr. Rice, I have a couple of questions. If you go back to the investment slide there.
Sure.
On the, on the Capital One, are we fully laddered out on that invested yet? Or do we still have some to go?
On the, on the long-term investments?
Yes.
We're completely laddered out now.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how far out are we going with the duration?
Three years.
Three years. And how, is it monthly that we're going to have things fall off the ladder?
That is, that is, right now, we've actually, you know, we were going from the 18 months to three years, if y'all, if y'all remember. We actually have some, you know, since we've instituted this, coming into the one year. We're holding on to those because those rates are so good. You know, we're holding those longer than the 18 months.
Okay.
So it's really going to look good in our portfolio to have those one percenters.
That's what I was kind of getting at. I think we've been doing this about a year, and I was just wondering.
So our, so our, the amount that we have out there, long-term, is about $54 million right now.
In the, in the three-year category?
Correct. Not to three years. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Rice?
Yes, sir.
Our, our investment policy says we can go three years.
Yes, sir.
That's a local policy.
That is local.
The public investment policy says you can go how far?
10 years.
10 years?
Mm-hmm.
Are you sure that's a, that's a?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Item seven A, Region Six EESC Board of Directors election. Dr. Stockton?
Mrs. Galatas, will you introduce this item, please?
Yes, Dr. Stockton. At your place, you have a little half slip of paper. This is somewhat unusual, it'll be a little bit weird, I'm thinking, for you. We have not done this really in the past because none of these positions have ever been contested, but we have one contested position this year. So what, the instructions we received from the Regional Service Center and in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, you know, the action you take has to be open to the public. So I'm going to ask you in a minute for each of the three places on the ballot, if you'll raise your hand if you're going to vote for that person. And then if you do vote for that person, you need to mark your ballot accordingly. You don't have to vote for anyone if you don't want to. You did receive some information, I think, previously, kind of giving you some information about each of the candidates. And then we will collect those ballots, and we will put them in the envelope we were provided by the service center and submit them to them so they can be counted and the Board of Directors for the service center can be determined. And so your candidate in Place One, with only one candidate, is Virgie Dotson. And so any of you that are going to be voting for Ms. Dotson, if you'd raise your hand indicating you will. And then if you're not raising your hand, I'm assuming you are not voting for Ms. Dotson or just not voting at all. So if you'll mark your ballot accordingly, that would be wonderful. We want to Place Two, there, this is the contested race. You have Curtis Kimbrough or Jennifer Carlton are the two candidates. So if you're going to vote for Curtis Kimbrough, if you'd please raise your hand. Okay, no one. If you're going to vote for Ms. Carlton, if you'd raise your hand. And then mark your ballot accordingly, please. And then finally, in Place Three, Mr. Golson, Thomas Golson. If you're going to vote for Mr. Golson, if you'd raise your hand. And if you're not, then mark your ballot accordingly, please. I appreciate that.
You need our name on them?
No, do you not put your name on them? Pass them down to us.
We did it publicly, we pretty much-
Wait a minute. There's a violation in the ballot box around here.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
You very much withstand the adjourn. Thank you. I did it on purpose. I was going for the record, Ray just kept asking questions.
I told him, I'm going to keep my record.